Okay, we're ready to begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order Friday, June 25th, 2021 at 8:30 a.m. Myra, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Winmiller?
Present.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
There.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Pastello?
Present.
Commissioner Galladay? Commissioner Galladay?
Will someone let Commissioner Galladay know that she's muted?
I believe she's aware. I think she's trying to to take care of the situation. I did ask her to unmute.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gladney?
Present.
Commissioner Beach?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson? And Commissioner Cox?
Here.
This is Commissioner Galladay. I just unmuted. There was something on the page that I couldn't remove, but I finally got it off.
Thank you.
We have a quorum?
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. The third item on the agenda is the presentation of a proclamation, and I would like for Metro Transit bus operator Nick Attum, and I would like to turn that over to Talby Roach and to Commissioner Zimmerman.
Good morning, Commissioners. So we do have the pleasure this morning of sending presenting one of our great employees who have gone above and beyond the duty. So we're doing that today. We find ourselves in the paper frequently, but one of the neat things is when we have something that's very positive to talk about. And of course, Nick Attum, I believe is the way we say that. And so we're here to, of course, honor him. I want to thank Commissioner Zimmerman for being here, of course. You know, this is one of those situations, we ask our operators to show up in difficult shifts every single day all across the this vast area. They do that regularly and every day in difficult circumstances. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to remind everybody, it's hard to operate our machinery, our buses. It's hard to do that, and we have essentially hundreds of employees who do that every day and work for not only me, but of course, this whole commission. In this case, Nick really went above and beyond, showing that role in community. In other words, reaching out to the humanity of our customers and even folks who may not be our customers in a really extraordinary action. And I'm having the pleasure this morning of recognizing that kind of above and beyond duty that that Nick performed. And I would like for just a minute, because part of this is we work underneath the Board of Commissioners, and our operators are very aware of this. We are very aware of this, and we represent you every day. And this initiative was also begun by Justin. And Justin, I wanted to pass it to you to see if you had any comments.
Sure. And it's nice to meet you, Nick. Thanks for taking time out of your day to come up here. As Talby said, you know, we expect good work from our employees in the field, but when somebody does something exceptional, it deserves special recognition. So it was, you know, the story of what we heard of you did, it was it was heroic. And I don't like to pull that word around, but it was very brave. Thank you so much for what you did. And it's a pleasure to be here personally to thank you and to recognize what you did. And I'd like to do it on behalf of the nine other commissioners I serve with as well. So thanks for coming up here, and I think we've got something to give you as well.
We do. We're going to stand up and move over with the actual proclamation. I'm going to take this minute to see if any other Commissioners would like to make a comment.
I would just like to say, well done. Congratulations, and thank you so much for everything that you do for Metro and for the community.
Come on over here, Nick. Hold the top.
Hold the top, all right.
Turn the course patty here with big smiles. Social media, of course.
I blink a lot, so make sure to double check.
Nick, do you have anything to say as an operator who's out there every day?
Oh, I don't know. I just, I'm like that. I'm pretty good.
Thank you, Dave.
I did tell you how much that means. I hear that from our operators all the time. I know Jessica hears it all the time. That's just, it's hard work. You know, it is modeled by folks like you, not only Karen. I love their job. I love their... Sure. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
I would just add, too, you know, I know the board, we don't have much interaction out in the field, but I've said this before, I'll tell you, some of my favorite times serving on this board are getting tours of the East St. Louis garage, getting out of the line, getting the bars with our security. In the field, meeting with colleagues, that's the highlights of my four-year, five-year sort of career. So that's, it really is fun. Anyway, thank you again, Nick. Thanks so much, and enjoy the day.
Thank you, Talby. Thank you, Justin. And particularly, thank you to the bus operator. That was amazing. I will say we're having a little bit of audio issues in the boardroom. We couldn't hear exactly what was going on. So just for for future reference, if we can try to work on the audio in the boardroom when we're having a hybrid meeting, I would appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is a public comment. Myra, were there any public comment cards submitted?
No, Chair, none were submitted.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes of the April 23rd, 2021 Board of Commissioners' open meeting. They're provided for review in your packet. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, may have a motion?
Don't move.
Second. Thank you. Do we need a vote on this?
Just a voice vote.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes of the May 21st, 2021 Special Meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The minutes were also provided in our board packet. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next item is a report of the President. Talby Roach is going to give us some comments.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and good morning again to all the Commissioners. I do have more extensive comments that are appropriate for executive session, so I will try to hold some of my time for that. I do want to mention, however, that we did have our Juneteenth celebration on Saturday. I thought it was extremely successful, very well received by both our partners and in 788, who also cosponsored the event. And of course, we had quite a few operators there. I'd, of course, love to get more attendance, but we moved on it very quickly, and I would I would declare it a success. I want to thank Justin, in particular, for coming by with his lovely daughter. Thank you. We had farm animals and everything. It was...
We petted a llama. We did not get on the pony, though. So it was good. Next year, maybe. So we'll see.
Very good. So anyway, but it really just felt good. I really, it just was one of those times, we've certainly had a challenging year, but it was nice to get out as colleagues and honor such a wonderful date. And I believe it was a very successful event. So I'll conclude my comments in the open session. Chair, please, on to you.
Thank you, Talby. Next item is a report of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee, and I will turn it to Commissioner Zimmerman to give the report.
Thank you. And can you hear me at this volume?
Yeah.
Is this good? Okay. Good morning, everyone. The report is, "A virtual meeting of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee was held on May 21st, 2021, immediately following the Board of Commissioners' special meeting." The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your board packet today under item number eight. "The AFA Committee is introducing two items on the consent agenda for your consideration today under item number 12, with the committee's recommendation for approval." And those two agenda items under number 12 are: A) sole-source contracts for hardware-software maintenance; B) amendment to board policy Section 30.070 hedging. At the May meeting, the committee also approved the Fiscal Year 2022 Audit Work Plan and the Internal Audit Policies and Procedures Manual, Revision III. A presentation was made regarding fiscal year 2021 audits, and several informational items were presented to the committee, including the IAD Audit Follow-Up Summary, Third Quarter Fiscal Year 2021; Internal Audit Status Report, Third Quarter Fiscal Year 2021; IAD SSO Status Report, First Quarter Calendar Year 2021; Treasury Safekeeping Quarterly Accounts Audit, ending fiscal ending in December 31st, 2020, pardon me; the Quarterly Financial Statement, Third Quarter; the Treasurers' Report, and also a procurement report. This concludes my report for the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting today.
Thank you, Commissioner Zimmerman. The next item is a report of the Operations Committee, which I will give. There was a virtual meeting of the Operations Committee held on May 21st, 2021, immediately following the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting. The minutes, the draft minutes of the meeting are included in your board packet under item number nine. The Operations Committee is introducing four items for the consent agenda today for your consideration under item number 12, with the committee's recommendation of approval. The items include C) Metro Transit's Agency Safety Plan, Resolution Number 1139; D) Contract Award Light Rail Vehicle Professional Engineering Consulting Services, Resolution Number 1140; E) Title VI Procedures and Analysis Updates, Resolution Number 1141; and F) Marketing and Strategic Planning Services, Resolution Number 1142. One item, the Contract Award for the Electronic Fair Collection System, was postponed for further discussion. In addition, at the May committee meeting, an operations report was provided by Jessica McFerrin-Miller, Executive Director, Metro Transit, and an update regarding pilot fare programs to promote access equity and ridership was provided by Jessica Gershman. This concludes my report of the Operations Committee meeting. Next item on the agenda is the report of the Safety and Security Committee, Commissioner Simmons. Oh, I'm sorry, there was no, I believe there's no report at this time?
Correct. Yes, the next meeting will be on August 12th.
Great. Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 12, which is the consent agenda. All the items that we were just discussing, the operations and audit report, so it's items A through F. I would make, I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item is item 13, Employee Benefits, the Self-Funded Health Plan Contract Approvals. And I believe that Chuck Stewart and Dave Tobin will be providing comments.
Yes, I'm going to ask both gentlemen to move up to the microphones to, of course, perfect our system, I hope. And Commissioners, thank you for your patience on this. I've asked essentially Dave to kind of consolidate because although these are different contracts and resolutions, they do generally deal with the same subject and therefore the same kind of policy decision. But of course, if any Commissioner would like a specific contract pulled out, we're happy to do that at your discretion. If you would.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, BSD team. So this is, we're bringing to you three contracts, one for pharmacy, one for medical, one for dental. These provide the core of our benefits program. Of course, our objective is to provide world-class benefits for our Bi-State team so that we can attract and retain the best talent available. I'd like to commend...
Excuse me, could you speak up a little louder, please?
Okay, is that better? Is that better?
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
I think that's better, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'd like to commend our benefits team. This did not make our committee meetings because Dave was holding out for the last dollar, okay? I mean, it was a very competitive process, and again, I think we have a great group of contracts here, and it will help us going forward as we continue to improve the benefits provided by State Development. So Dave, you can take over from there.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chuck. Can everyone hear me all right? Okay. So as Chuck said, we're presenting three contracts today. All of them are effective on January 1, 2022. They run for either three- or five-year periods. The first contract is for Pharmacy Benefit Management Services. Now, we participate in a purchasing collaborative through the St. Louis Area Business Health Coalition with 47 other employers with a total of 320,000 members. That obviously gives us some purchasing power. So that is a three-year contract term, again, to begin on January 1, at a total cost of $25 million. However, once we receive our pharmaceutical manufacturer rebates, we expect our net cost to be around $13.7 million, but our initial outlay is 25. So we will be asking for a contract award for 25 million. The second contract, as Chuck mentioned, is for Medical Plan Services, Administration Services, and Stop-Loss Insurance. This is for a five-year contract period to begin January 1, 2022, for a not-to-exceed amount of $10 million. And this award is going to our incumbent Cigna, so we have been with Cigna since September of 2010. The third contract is for Dental Plan Administration Services, again, for a five-year period effective January 1, for an award to incumbent Delta Dental of Missouri for an amount not to exceed $5.4 million. So the total projected cost is $40.4 million. The funding source is through operating funds and employee contributions. So I'd be happy to take any questions you may have on any of those three contract award requests.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate that. I would note that if there are no objections from the board, I'd like a motion to approve all three resolutions, 1146, 1147, and 1148 as a single vote. The information... Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Staying? Thank you. Next item is 14. "A teleconference meeting of the Nominating Committee was held on June 9 at 2:00 p.m. The draft minutes of the meeting are included in your board packet under item 14. At the meeting, the committee voted unanimously to accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners for approval the following slate of officers for 2122, whose positions will take effect immediately upon adjournment of today's meeting." The slate is Rose Winmiller, Missouri Chair, Justin Zimmerman, Illinois Vice Chair, Herb Simmons, Illinois Treasurer, and Fred Pastello, Missouri Secretary. Are there any additions, changes, or suggestions for other officers? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Talby, is there any unscheduled business?
No, Chair, except we did, and I think as you recall, you asked for a specific explanation on DBE under the next item, under 16. Mr. Curran has a presentation about that. I will ask Mr. Curran to move to the podium so he can give a brief synopsis and some clarification, which was requested by the board.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. In response to Chair Winmiller's question last month, we have included in your board materials today an explanation of how Bi-State Development sets its disadvantaged business enterprise, or DBE, goals for contracts. A three-step formula is used to determine the DBE goal. Step one is a calculation of the amount of USDOT or federal funds in the project, which is the percentage weight. Step two is a determination of the relative availability of DBE firms able to perform the necessary work. And in step three, the percentage weight of federal funds in the project calculated in step one is multiplied by the relative availability of DBEs in step two to create a weighted base figure or the DBE percentage goal. Every DBE, excuse me, every Bi-State solicitation, whether it includes a specific DBE goal or not, states that prime contractors should maximize the DBE participation. However, due to regulations that govern federal funding, Bi-State may not go beyond the legal specifications and set goals outside of the federally prescribed process. A more complete explanation of the entire process, including the definition of DBE, the certification criteria, and work qualifications is included in the briefing memo, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board? Tom, I just have one, and I appreciate your attention to detail about the process. Is our DBE process working well?
So the DBE process is reviewed by FTA, and so we've just set our triennial three-year goal for DBE. The way that it works is it doesn't pertain to everything that we do because certain activities do not have really a subcontracting opportunity for DBE, such as purchase of large LRVs or vehicles. But FTA has a process where they pre-approved certain suppliers or vendors for those large purchase items that takes care of those goals. So what our program does is just reflect the availability of DBE participation that's available in the community. I think that everyone can have aspirations that go beyond what the legal requirement is, but we can make that part of the goal. For local communities, such as the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County, there's often MBE and WBE goals, so often 25 and 5, but that is not permitted at the federal level. Everything has to be according to the DBE guidelines established by the FTA.
So while the city and the county, and I'm assuming St. Clair County, have probably some some additional goals, Metro legally cannot adopt those goals?
We cannot when it involves federal funding.
Thank you. If there's any way that we can be supportive of the local goals, and I know that most of our contracts are federally funded, I would be supportive of that. So I'm just adding that as an editorial, a comment from me.
So, Chair, if you will, so we do indeed do that. As a matter of fact, sometimes on individual contracts, and I simply happen to be more familiar with some of those in Illinois, when we bid projects out and they involve more local dollars specifically, we can exceed those goals, and we normally use as a measuring stick in Illinois what the iDOT standard is to try to push those numbers up a bit. But we are more limited having to do with, for instance, the CFR regulations that are referenced in Tom's memo. So we definitely support and leave that opening for our local partners, specifically sometimes the St. Clair County Transit District, or for instance, the city of St. Louis, that may have goals that are a little higher. But we are definitely a little bit more in a box having to do with the federal regulations and specifically the CFRs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got a text from someone who's listening virtually, and they indicated that even when the audio was turned up in the boardroom, apparently other folks who are listening and want to participate are having a hard time hearing. I don't know if there's anything we can do about that, but just to let you know for future reference. I know we're, this is kind of a hybrid test model, and so if there are folks that are listening or participating in the meeting and are having trouble with audio or visual, if you could let us know, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of these was my mistake. I should have walked over with a handheld mic, and that was my mistake on the presentation, so please, thank you. But unless you tell us, we don't know. Thank you. And Chuck's mic, I think, was just a little, excuse me, was definitely not loud enough, but that's very helpful, so thank you for that. And please keep the texts coming because we can only make it better when we know. So, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is an operations report, and I would ask Executive Director Jessica McFerrin-Miller for comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm looking for someone to give me a thumbs up if you can hear me on the screen. All right. Good morning, and thank you for your time. I want to give you a brief update today on some of the progress that we are making to deliver an excellent customer experience and to restore ridership aboard the Metro Transit system. We gave a detailed briefing at our Operations Committee meeting in the month of May about some of the ongoing and upcoming initiatives that we have. I want to give you a quick update today. On Monday, Monday was a big day for us. On June 21st, we instituted an additional layer of service stabilization. So we're now operating at about 90% pre-pandemic Metro Bus service levels and about 94% of Metro Link pre-pandemic service levels. We anticipate roughly holding at that pattern as long as we can support that level of service in the months ahead. Of the programs that we're offering, we are explicitly focused on trying to reduce barriers to utilizing Metro Transit so that we can provide a service that is meaningful to the community and so that we may restore ridership. Earlier last month, we launched the Gateway Go Youth Fair Program. I'm pleased to report that is picking up, and we're offering additional fair options under Gateway Go, which is available for individuals aged 13 to 25. On Monday, our day pass began to be $5, and that's a reduction in price. And we're hoping to get that day pass in the hands of more of our customers via a scratch-off ticket available at our ticket vending machines, through vendors, and through our mobile application. We also launched On the Way with ADA. This is a program that is intended explicitly to reduce barriers to mobility for our disabled customers, namely those that are eligible for our pair transit services. To date, we have already distributed 720 On the Way with ADA Gateway Cards, so that's free fare on Metro Bus and Metro Link for our pair transit eligible customers. We're just five days in, so I don't yet have ridership data to report to you from that program, but I look forward to keeping you apprised. Our travel training program and our ADA services team is working to support our disabled customers to ensure that they have the resources necessary if they wish to make the transition from pair transit to Metro Bus and Metro Link service. This month, we also announced expansion of our Via Micro Transit service. This has been focused in two primary markets. We've extended our service area in greater South St. Louis County, and we've added early morning and late-night service hours in greater North County. This service is intended to reduce the total travel time for our customers and make that last jump from the Metro Link or the frequent Metro Bus system to a customer's home, workplace, or desired destination faster. We look forward to updating you on our progress. Finally, next week, we are very excited to launch our electric bus program. This program, which begins with the launch of 14 60-foot buses and four 40-foot buses, soon to be followed by an additional six 40-foot buses with additional vehicles coming in in increments of several months in the years to come. This program offers an excellent customer experience, but it also helps Metro protect and preserve the environment, and it's enabling us to deliver environmental justice to many of the communities we serve. I hope to see you next Tuesday at our electric bus event. Finally, we are working to... working to support and engage our team. We are experiencing difficulties, as so many employers are, at attracting and retaining our team members, and we have a number of initiatives available and underway to help us do just that. This concludes my operations report, and I know we've got a couple of items to discuss in executive session this morning. In the meantime, may I answer any questions for you, Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. We'll move to item number 18, call for future meeting dates.
Yes, Chair, the next meeting of the Safety and Security Committee will be held on Thursday, August 12, at 8:30 a.m. We have also moved the Operations Committee to August 12, which will follow the Safety and Security meeting. The next Operations Committee, I'm sorry, the next Audit Finance and Administration Committee meeting will be held on Friday, August 20, at 8:30, and the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, September 24, at 8:30.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, the, the Operations Committee will be now on the 12th, not the 20th. I think in your board packet, it might probably still indicate that it's on the, the 20th. I would entertain a motion that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters, as permitted under Bi-State Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080, D1 Legal, D2 Real Estate, and D10 Auditors. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Thank you. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons? Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
The motion passed.
Thank you. We will move into executive session in just a few minutes.
Thank you, we are ready.
Thank you. The board has reconvened to the open session. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 21, 2021, Board of Commissioners' executive session as a closed record?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented, including the Gulfstream Lease Term Sheet and Consolidated Lease Agreement, which is Resolution 1143, the Draft Passenger Revenue Department Working Funds Audit Report, Resolution 1144, and the Draft Armored Car Loomis Contract Audit, Resolution 1145?
So moved.
I heard two moves and no second.
Sam in second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes from the Board of Commissioners and Committee Meetings, January 2020 through June 2020, with redactions as presented as open records?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello?
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
The motion passed.
Thank you all. If there's no further business, I would request a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Simmons.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thanks, everyone. Have a great weekend.
You too.
Thanks, everybody. Have a nice July.
Thank you.